The Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Patena.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which we give justice for all.
Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
And Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of May 19, 2020. The first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation recognizing National Public Works Week. Please join me as we watch a short video to commemorate this occasion. There is another version with the tune "As The Beat Goes On," and it's really fun. Our public works professionals really are the rhythm of our city. So I will now read a proclamation celebrating the 60th year of National Public Works Week. Due to social distancing, I am going to stay sitting up here this evening. Whereas, public works, infrastructure facilities and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety and well-being of the people of the city of Peoria, Arizona. And whereas, during this time of the COVID-19 pandemic, public works services such as water, sewer, engineering, project management, recycling, bulk trash, right-of-way maintenance, street, fleet and facility repairs, all proceeded uninterrupted throughout the crisis, delivering essential services to maintain a sense of normalcy. And whereas, certain public works personnel dealt directly with higher-risk situations such as transporting bus and paratransit passengers to jobs, medical appointments and grocery stores, or custodians cleaning high-exposure areas or rooms after all others had left the building, or wastewater personnel who diligently treat the water. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the United States of America to gain knowledge of and to maintain an interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, this year's theme, "The Rhythm of Public Works," might be best captured in the phrase "The Beat Goes On," speaking to the essential nature of public work services in support of everyday quality of life. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore I, Kathy Carlet, Mayor of the City of Peoria in the state of Arizona, do hereby designate the week of May 17 through 23, 2020, as National Public Works Week. Right. And there are some people here this evening who I would like to recognize. There is a proclamation for each of you sitting at the desk at the front of the study session table here. I'm sorry, I can't meet you down there for a photo during this time, but if you would like to come down when I call your name, we can at least recognize you. So from Public Works, Patricia Rodriguez, Lead Custodian. And from Water Services, Preston Brown, Utility System Operator 2. And from Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities, Kyle Renselman, Park Ranger. We would just like to thank all of you for all of the work that you do for us and the citizens of the city of Peoria. We are grateful and indebted to you and for all of your service. We thank you so much. Okay, we will now proceed to the Consent Agenda. All items on consent are considered to be routine or have been previously reviewed by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered in the normal sequence on the agenda. Tonight's Consent Agenda includes items, one item that requires a public hearing. So if there is any member of the public present who would like to address a public hearing on the Consent Agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium or get it to the city clerk. And I have received no speaker request forms. The city clerk has received none. We are double-checking. Got some people out in the reception area who have speaker request forms available to them there, and there is none. So Council, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as it is.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Will the Clerk please poll the council?
Mayor Carlet.
Yes.
Councilmember Patena.
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt.
Yes.
And Councilmember Dunn.
Yes.
And the Consent Agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business on the regular agenda, begin with Item 16R, which is the Arts Enhancement Initiative. And we will go to City Manager Jeff Tein for our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and we'll actually have one presentation for a series of different action items that are ahead of you, and we'll explain that as we go forward. Much of these are related to arts-related activities here in the city of Peoria. Probably important to note is that as we continue to move through this health and economic crisis, the City Council had encouraged staff to do all we can to mobilize our businesses and not-for-profits to prepare themselves for the difficulties that they had during this time. And among those that are hardest hit are what we call the creative economy, those within the arts agencies, museums, galleries, business owners that relate to that, actors within the theaters. All of these different individuals are all at risk at a point like this. The solutions really will require partnerships, partnerships all within the community. That means various government jurisdictions, it means the private sector, and it means philanthropies, to help solidify the funding and make sure that there is expertise available to everyone as they navigate through this difficult time in the arts community. So to help keep our Peoria's cultural scene vibrant and alive, we do have a series of speakers, including Chris Halid, our Neighborhood and Human Services Director, and Mary Lou Stevens, our Arts and Events Manager. But first, I'm going to pass it over to Eric Strunk, our Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Jeff mentioned, Peoria has been a big supporter of the creative economy, the arts and culture for quite a number of years. Just kind of looking through some historical records, in 1987 was really the first foray, public foray into arts and culture. That's when the Public Arts Program was established, 33 years ago, a long time ago. And since then, it's served Peoria very well. I think we can all agree that we've been able to strategize a little bit on where we want to take the arts. We've financially enabled us to accomplish many of those goals. We have something that's called 1% for the Arts Fund, and that's basically a percent of all of our capital projects set aside to acquire art, whether it's sculptures in parks, part of a new building or facility that we construct, performing arts, static arts, paintings, that type of thing. It's been a very robust program. Even so, as Jeff mentioned, we're going through the COVID-19 pandemic, and that has had an impact on our local art scene and some of those that provide fine arts to the city and within the city. As a result of that, we did receive some requests to take a look at what we could do as a city to potentially provide relief, some type of assistance, some type of initiative that we could offer up to our fine arts organizations in this community. We also heard from a couple of our larger art organizations, specifically Theater Works, which manages the Peoria Center for the Performing Arts on behalf, for us, on our behalf. And then we also heard from Arizona Broadway Theater that they also too, just as Theater Works, had to close their doors due to the COVID-19. And that is the result of the Governor's Proclamation and the emergency declarations that we had in place, well-founded, well-thought-out. So as a result of that, they closed their doors, ads did a lot of other local businesses and nonprofits. The upshot of that is we did receive some requests from them for assistance. In preparing our response to those, we spent considerable time in looking at their numbers, making sure that what we would propose to you and recommend to you would be well-founded and well-thought-out. What you're going to see in a series of recommendations, there's four items on the agenda, is just that. We have one in general for smaller art organizations to acquire additional art to keep that creative economy moving forward. It comes in the form of an arts initiative. Chris will explain that and talk through that. Then we do have an ask, a request and a recommendation from Theater Works. Then we have two final ones, one from Arizona Broadway Theater, and then from the parent company or the company that owns the building in which AEBT, Arizona Broadway Theater Works, Klos Enterprises LLC. With that, just wanted to reassure you, we looked at the financials on both sides. We looked at our 1% for the Arts Fund. Could it handle such requests? We're pleased to say it could. And then we also looked at the numbers that were provided to us by AEBT and Theater Works. So with that, I'll be here to help out, but Chris and Mary Lou, Mary Lou's our content expert. Chris will kind of go through everything else and hopefully will satisfy any questions you may have. So, Chris? Thanks, Eric. As Eric mentioned, this impacted all organizations, large and small, significantly, and regardless of their stature, profit or nonprofit. So what we put together is a robust relief package that we thought could cover a variety of different organizations in Peoria or providing arts programming in Peoria. First up, Item 16R, the Arts Enhancement Initiative. First off, as Eric mentioned, Peoria's done a fantastic job in the area of arts and culture programming since 1987 with the Development of the Arts Culture Plan and 1% for the Arts Reserve, over $2 million has been set aside. One of the major things was the Municipal Arts Program that's been going on since the '90s, very successfully assisting and providing arts programming through nonprofit artists out in Peoria. This year, we know that the impact is impacting all artists, for-profit and nonprofit. So for the first time, we're proposing one, an enlarged amount of monies. We usually are about $50,000 a year for the programming. We're requesting $100,000 that can be used for for-profit and nonprofit art organizations that can provide arts programming within the city of Peoria. We will be issuing grants at a minimum of $1,000 up to $5,000, could provide significant programming in Peoria and assist those companies. All awardees, again, will provide a public benefit or arts programming within the city of Peoria. We hope to have our review and award process completed as soon as possible, as early as the end of June, so we can get the monies out and working in the community. And as Eric mentioned, we do have funds available in the 1% for the arts. As such, staff recommends council establish a one-time funding for $100,000 for the Arts Initiative Grant Program to procure fine arts from qualified nonprofit and for-profit organizations serving arts programming in the city of Peoria. You want to take action on each one or all at the end?
Well, I would probably just play through the presentation.
Each one? All right, fair enough. Our next item pertains to Theater Works' operating agreement. As you know, they are the tenant operator of the Peoria Center for Performing Arts and have been for a number of years. They provide lots of events in the community, over 200 events, and host 40 theatrical and arts education. They bring upwards of $36,000 to the Old Town area. They work very closely with our special events staff when we try and programming another $60,000 that come down to the Old Town area. We have, and last time we amended this agreement was in 2018, and what we're recommending, and we do have funds available, is increasing a one-time increase of their operating agreement to increase $125,000 for fiscal year 20, to amend the agreement to do that, and also to defer the rental sharing that is supposed to go into place this July and moving it back to July 2022. Those will both provide them relief and get them prepared for the next upcoming arts programming season. Item 18R, Arizona Broadway Theater. There's two parts to the Arizona Broadway Theater. Arizona Broadway Theater is the nonprofit operator of the theater. As Eric mentioned, it sits on city land. It's over in the P-83 area. It's been operating for 14 years. They bring approximately 100,000 patrons through their organization, the various different musicals and programming that they do there in the P-83 area. They do that through big musical, main stage shows, multiple showings a week and runs of the week. They've agreed to provide in-kind program and services in Peoria in exchange for this one-time operating agreement. And again, we have funds available in the 1% for the arts, and as such, staffs recommend authorization to create an operating agreement and fund it to the tune of $45,000 for one-time Arizona Broadway Theater assistance. And the final one is the for-profit arm of that entity. They own the theater, which sits upon city-owned land. We have a lease with them. It's a 25-year lease with multiple extensions, taking it to about 45 years. Currently, they do have an option to purchase that over time. That would remain intact, so staff's recommending we amend the underlying lease to allow them to defer upwards of three months for each month's deferred rent, which we assume will pass through Klos to and benefit AEBT. That month would be, each month would be added on to the end of the term of the lease. Those are the four that totals, I believe, $270,000 worth of one-time monies coming out of the Arts, 1% for the Arts Fund balance in order to fund these initiatives.
Okay, I would like to talk about these individually if we can, so if you don't mind going back to 16R, the slide that accompanied that. Okay, so this sort of kicks off an entire conversation about arts. We have a 1% for the Arts Fund. That means that all of our capital projects, the amount of that capital project, 1% of that goes into a specific fund, and that fund can be used for nothing else except some way to pay arts. In many cases, in the past, it has gone to commissioned artworks that now are around the city. Many, many years ago, it went to pay the mortgage for the Arizona Theater that Theater Works is now in, Theater for the Performing Arts. So we've used it in various ways. Right now, we have a crisis, a crisis of our small businesses and of course, a health crisis that has caused us to first look at arts because for one, we have an arts fund that can be reprogrammed instead of putting, you know, sculptures and works of art around our city, we can use it to help our small businesses. And in addition to that, the arts community is one that could very easily fall between the cracks, and we could lose them first and fast. And so bringing this forward doesn't mean that we're not going to be talking about the rest of our businesses in our city and commerce and economic development, but it means that, you know, we have to look at what is critical first. And so that's what we're doing here tonight. And so with that, that means that we are going to take this dollar amount out of the Arts Fund and use it to actually prop up some of these businesses and institutions. So with that, Council, are there any questions or comments that you would like to make on Item 16R? Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, just a quick question. What is it that you hope to, you're going to give grants for $1,000 to $5,000. What is it that you hope to accomplish? Is it keeping the building open? Is it salaries? Is it supplies? What's the purpose of the grant?
Mayor, Councilmember Patena, the purpose of the grant is to provide opportunities for local artists to continue to do their trade in the city of Peoria. So in exchange for the grant, they will be providing arts programming within the city of Peoria. So it's a revenue source to them to continue to operate.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I have a question about the review and awards process. So does that mean there'll be an application process where these prospects will actually apply for these dollars and then share their needs or what they're going to do, and they have to meet certain criteria and fit within guidelines?
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Binsbacher, exactly, we would open up an RFP process. We hope to have applications turned in by the end of May in order to turn it around quickly through a review committee and be able to award by the end of June.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
That seems, that seems pretty fast. I mean, to get the word out and get the process started. I mean, I applaud that, but it does seem like a big bite to chew off. Well, I'm tickled with this. I do have a couple of questions. We're awarding Theater Works, let's use that as an example of bulk, can they, for example, puppet works, which is within Theater Works, could puppet works come and apply for one of these if it had a staging that they wanted to do that Theater Works didn't have a budget for?
You might want to take it.
Just talk loud.
Sorry, my microphone was reading. There it goes. Councilmember Hunt, Mayor, thank you for the question.
So yes, any for-profit or nonprofit organization can apply for these grants, and they can apply for up to three grants.
Okay, so Theater Works would apply for it, but they would be explaining what they want to do, something with puppets or with their senior program or something. I think that might have been the only question. So the group doesn't have to reside in Peoria, but the thing they want to produce has to go towards Peoria.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. The differentiation is that as a for-profit business, you would be required to have a Peoria business license, and for a nonprofit, you would have to show that you do the work in the city limits of Peoria, and it would benefit Peoria residents.
Okay, thank you. This is going to be great.
Any other comments? All right, do I have a motion on Item 16R?
I happily move that we accept that. I make a motion that we accept the Arts Enhancement Initiative.
And a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes.
Mayor Carlet?
Yes. And 16R passes unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to item 17R, which is Theater Works Operating Agreement Amendment. So council, is there any discussion that you have with regards to Theater Works Operating Agreement? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I'm going to ask this for both, so I'm, I'll ask it individually for each one. You did sit down and go through, and coming to this number, we did sit down with the budgets, go through, kind of look at what we felt was appropriate and what they needed in order to continue to function. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor Finn, we did indeed with these two organizations, they provided not just the current situation, but the last couple of years of financials for the nonprofit entities. We did review their monthly expenditures. Primarily, we're focused on current, keep the lights on kind of needs and moving forward in order to start and keep production going when they're able to resume.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. As Vice Mayor Finn, I have a question, but it'll be for both 17 and 18. So what has Theater Works done to position themselves during this pandemic?
I'm sorry?
What has Theater Works done to position themselves during this pandemic? Meaning, have they gone out for grants? Have they gone out? What are they doing to get some additional funding or some assistance?
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. Mayor Carlet, The Theater Works has been very quick to respond. So initially, the hard news came, and they did have to furlough their entire staff. So that was the hard part. But after that, they became very quick to respond. They applied for a PPP loan. They made sure that they got with experts through their contacts, through Virginia Piper and other organizations, to set them up financially, to handle the pandemic, and also to look at new and interesting programming opportunities as they come out of this, so that they will be ready for what I consider going to be the new normal for theater goers for now and in the future. So I think they have done quite a bit in terms of curtailing their expenses, making sure that they have been fiscally responsible, as well as looking for donations. As a matter of fact, on Arizona Gives Day, they were the number-one theater in the state of Arizona in terms of the amount of money they raised in one day. And they did kind of a telethon, if you will, and they had many performers, including yours truly, which I would not have normally done, but you know, sometimes you got to do what you got to do. And they received over $30,000 in one day. So they're doing everything they can to reach out to all of the entities to make sure that they can function during this time.
Can you explain to the public what a PPE?
Yes.
Grant or loan is?
So the PPP loan is a pay protection program, and that was specifically so that they could bring back their staff, and it will be forgiven as long as 75% of it, I believe, hope I'm not quoting that wrong, my husband's in the business, so he'll kill me if I say this wrong, that, as long as that goes to salaries for employees, then that will be forgiven as a grant as opposed to a loan that will have to be repaid. So many of the small businesses have taken advantage of that, and I'm happy to report that Theater Works has recently, as of last week, brought some of their employees back to start working on getting prepped for their reopen.
That's good news. And would you care to show us that you did that, David? No?
Not tonight. I didn't bring my guitar with me, so.
All right, are there any further questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just one quick question. By the way, you nailed that it is 75% for payroll, 25% for utilities and transportation and such, so long as the employees don't make over $99,000. So you nailed it pretty good there. So am I assuming that they got the PPP loan?
They did.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion on item 17R?
A motion.
You have a motion and a second, council? Or would the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes.
And Mayor Carlet?
Yes. And item 17R passes unanimously. All right, we will now talk about item 18R, Arizona Broadway Theater Agreement. Council, are there any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor?
So I'd like to start, I think more with a statement than a question, but there's really two arms to this one. There is a for-profit side that not only owns the building, but also runs the operations, concessions, dining, business operations and such inside of that. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor Finn, that's correct. They also provide, they own the name Arizona Broadway Theater and charge a license fee for that. So they own the concept of Arizona Broadway Theater.
Okay, so my first question on there is I just want to make sure, obviously, we hold the responsibility of using taxpayer money very seriously, and I just want to make sure that this, what's being asked for is going to the not-for-profit side as opposed to the for-profit side. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor Finn, the attached agreement stipulates what the monies can and cannot be used for, and it strictly prohibits being used for funds such as the PPP, which they did get a PPP loan, so nothing for payroll, nothing for their lease or mortgage that hopefully is going to flow through because they said they would relieve those as well. So we put things as far as current operating needs and going forward that we deemed as allowable and not from a prior use.
Okay. And do you recall the amount on the PPP loan?
Yes, $545,000.
$545,000? Okay, very good. I think that's it for now.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know that the city is in receipt of their business plan, correct? And I know I can see three people in this room right now that are quite capable of going through that business plan and making a determination of what ABT needs. And apparently, their assessment is that they need $45,000 to keep their doors open, and I'm in agreement with that assessment, that $45,000, if that's what they said, then I'm in agreement with that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Binsbacher?
So that, just to clarify, so that amount was determined based on the review of their financials that were presented, considering the other, the PPP benefit that they received and all of that. Based on that information, that's how we came up with the $45,000, and with Theater Works as well.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Binsbacher, we looked at both organizations, and they showed us their current operating needs after they let their staff go. So ABT let 170 staff go. They were down to 12 to keep the lights on and operate things. So we looked at their current reduced operating needs, and when we went through that, we eliminated things that they already had grant funds for or otherwise we didn't think was towards keeping the lights on and progressing towards opening. They may have some other things that we deemed ineligible for taxpayer use.
Okay, thank you. I, these are really hard decisions to make, but I really appreciate staff tearing through all of this to come up with these decisions because this is just one component of supporting citizens and businesses and arts and all of the different things that we have to look at to get through this together and support various needs. And again, we need to be responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars and look at what resources we have to work with and all of the needs across the board, and these are hard decisions to make, but I appreciate the work that you put into evaluating all of this. I really do. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Binsbacher, just one other, it's more of a thank you. We did work with our finance department, our CFO, to look at both sets of the books, if you will, and there's unanimity in what we're recommending from that perspective.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes.
Mayor Carlet?
Yes. Item 18R passes unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to item 19R, which is Clos Enterprises LLC Lease Agreement. So this is the lease agreement between the city of Peoria and Clos Enterprises, or, yeah, Clos Enterprises, which is the profit side of ABT, and they are, their building is on city-owned property, correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
And so this would take three months' worth of that lease rate and put it on the end of their lease term?
Correct.
Okay, so it would defer it until the end. All right, council, are there any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor?
Weird, isn't it? So I just want to clarify that, again, she, the mayor mentioned this is the for-profit side, but the reason that we're doing this is the expectation that this is passed on to the nonprofit side. So this lease deferment is being done to the profit side under the assumption or agreement that it would be passed on to the nonprofit side. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor Finn, that's correct. In the attachment, the draft agreement, we have language to that effect.
Okay. Did the, did the business plans that we look at show any other lease deferments that were going to be passed over to the building lease? Are there any deferments that the for-profit side is going to defer for them as well?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Finn, one of the, we had conversations with the owner of both, the operator and the owner, and the owner of Clos, the for-profit portion, indicated that that part of it was prepared to relieve the monthly payment, didn't specify for how many months, but in that monthly payment, it factors in the mortgage on the building, the cost of the land that Clos has to pay on their behalf. So it is going to, from what the owner said, it will be passed on to ABT.
So there's help coming in from numerous areas for this entity?
Correct. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the owner of Clos Enterprises LLC, the for-profit, indicated that each month, ABT pays Clos a certain dollar sum. That certain dollar sum, they will forgive that for a period of time to ABT to kind of free up the capital to allow them to continue to work. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it does. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Okay. Can I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second and a third. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes.
And Mayor Carlet?
Yes. And that means item 19R passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item 20R, which is the Adoption and Ballot Placement Plan Peoria AZ 2040, General Plan. Mr. Tyne?
Thank you, and our planning and community development department's been hard at work over the last couple of years to review and complete a comprehensive multi-year update to the city's general plan. This is a document that sets the vision for the city going forward. It really reflects our smart growth principles. Staff has come before you, of course, several times, including study sessions and some action items over these last couple of years to receive policy guidance and direction and get a sense of the priorities as we do attempt to shape the future. At this point, we have Chris Hockes, our planning director, who will be present here for the formal acceptance to be considered to be placed on the November 2020 ballot. I'll pass it to Mr. Hockes.
Great, well, thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and council. Certainly, 20R and this date tonight, this is a date, it's been on the calendar for a long time for us. As Jeff mentioned, this is a multi-year effort. Tonight, what we're asking the council is to recognize the general plan in its final form and to formally place it on the ballot in November. So it sounds like it'll potentially be on the ballot with the charter amendments and all the other fun stuff that we're going to consider in November, right? So it'll be up there with that. As I mentioned, it's been completed in stages over the last few years. This general plan is different, that it wasn't an acknowledgement of just current conditions, but we looked forward prospectively to the next 10, 20, and years beyond. The work on the general plan could not have been successful without a program of extensive check-ins that we did with the various boards and commissions that we worked with, citizens that we got their input from, also working with our general plan advisory committee. I would like to note that this general plan that we're providing you tonight, it includes all of the extensive amendments that we made at the end of 2019 as part of that cycle. It also includes the minor general plan amendments, the refinements that the council saw last month, so that's all folded into what we're providing you tonight. Before I start, I wanted to recognize several people. I wanted to first start off and recognize the guidance that Mayor you and the council you've provided to the staff over the last several years on the general plan. Also wanted to recognize, we worked with several different boards and commissions. We worked with city leaders all over the organization. You know, we've got the core planning group up here that worked with Matrix Design Group, which was our consultant on the project. But I do want to recognize two very publicly, and I'm going to make her raise her hand there, Lori, over there. Lori Devers, our planning manager, but she was also the, she was the lead on this project. So her, along with Cody Gleason, I want to publicly acknowledge, I know that they spend a lot of time outside of the work week. They spent, I know they work on the weekends, too, just to ensure we had a top-rate project. So I want to publicly acknowledge them. I want to thank them for their efforts, their support for the community, and their time invested in this project. So I think we've got a very good product here tonight. Okay, so one of the challenging things we have to do is we're going to have to take this entire general plan, and we're going to have to boil it down to an issue statement for the ballot, right? So no easy feat there, of course, right? But one of the things I often get from citizens is there's a lot of, people don't always understand what a general plan is. So for the purpose of those that may be watching tonight, I just wanted to provide a brief, kind of a brief summary of what a general plan is and why it's important. So again, the general plan, this is the city's base document, guides growth over the next 10 to 20 years and beyond. It establishes the community vision, our values. It lays out goals, objectives, and actions that are intended to move the community forward. Now, some of these actions come in the form of development cases, you see. They might come in the form of initiatives like the livability initiative or our capital project. They might come in the form of, you know, updates to our master plans, like our library master plan or integrated, you know, utility master plan. Those kind of things all advance the general plan through. The general plan has 22 elements or topics. They include things like land use and circulation and water resources and a whole host of topics there. And one of the things that is unique, I believe still unique in Arizona, is that we're the only state that requires a general plan to go to public vote. So this has been the third time the general plan's been on the ballot. It was on the ballot in 2001, 2010, and then hopefully in 2020. One of them, probably the biggest misconceptions about the general plan is a lot of times people equate it to zoning. They're often seen as interchangeable, but they're very different, right? The general plan is aspirational. It has a land use plan that are the desired land uses for the future. It's more general in scope, whereas a zoning is what you can do today on a piece of property. There's a legal description attached to it. There's a whole host of regulations that are attached to that zoning as well. So they're very different, but they work together in how they move the community forward. Okay, so how is this plan different? Mentioned that there are 22 topic areas. These topic areas were all aligned in six chapters that coincide with the city council's livability goals. So you can kind of see on the right the six chapters, the six livability goals. Now, if someone was to come to me in an elevator and say, okay, Chris, what is the basis of the general plan? I would point to the chapters, the chapters that we use for the general plan, because the naming conventions, they're very outcome-oriented. So where does Peoria want to, where do we want to be in the future? We want economic prosperity. We want smart growth, integrated transportation, healthy neighborhoods. Arts and culture and education are important, and also superior public services. All those in a nutshell are where we want to move forward as a community. The goals, policies, and actions within the general plan, they advance the overall themes, and the themes that have resonated through our community outreach is community wellness. Place-making, making Peoria a community of distinction is very important to our citizenry. It's also important that we are, we continue to be fiscally sustainable into the future, not only with how we handle and how we're stewards of public tax dollars, but also about our land use decisions and decisions we make on many things. Also, that we capitalize on relationships that we have with our public partners and some of our private partners out there, and then that we continue to be adaptable. We always look to the future, and we try to make adjustments where we need to, to capture that new thinking. All right, so some of the highlights in the plan. Again, this plan is a complete rewrite. It's organized again around those six chapters that I It's organized, organized again around those six chapters that I, I noted. As part of the land plan development, the council early on asked us to look at new land use categories. They wanted, you wanted categories that were more descriptive, that were more outcome-oriented, and they provided a closer alignment with the form and character of development that was desired. So we developed brand-new land use categories. We also went through painstakingly, mile by mile, throughout the entire city. We had better topographical and better information on a number of data sets, and we use those new land use categories to then place on properties throughout the city. So we have a much more precise, even for a general plan, much more precise land plan, but it's, but you'll, you see that throughout the city with those new land use categories. We also completely updated the goals and policies and actions. Again, we, we aligned that with the livability initiative, and we've ensured in completing this document that it was in, in alignment with state law. We have to meet state law and accomplish several of those objectives that are in the statute. Methods of community outreach, the graphic up here kind of indicates or illustrates, rather, how we touched the different constituencies throughout the city. We did workshops and open houses early on. We did some online surveys to understand what are some of the things that are of interest to citizens. We had technical advisory committee and, and a general plan advisory committee meetings, youth outreach, updates. We've been in the news quite a bit, and we've worked with our office of communication to get the word out there. And then we've also early on worked on having a presence at several community events to ask questions and to talk to our, our citizenry about the general plan and its progress. Okay, so here's kind of a look at how we've moved forward. Again, the, we brought forward in November those huge amendments that included the new land use category, the new land use map. Last month, we looked at the last final refinements that we had to the general plan. Tonight, you have the final draft in front of you. We are looking to place that on the November 3 ballot. So what'll happen, if the council places it on the ballot, what'll happen between tonight and the ballot is what we're calling a blackout period. And that just means that we're, we're not going to consider any general plan actions during that period of time. And the reason for that is we don't want to, we want to make sure that the public record is very clear. We don't want to confuse the public vote and understanding of the general plan with actions that might be occurring. So there's going to be a blackout period during that period of time, and then, of course, with the ballot issued on November 3. So mayor and council, that's my presentation for tonight. Our request is that you accept the general plan and you approve Resolution 202034 and place it on November ballot. With that, I'll take any questions.
Wow. It's a tremendous accomplishment, the 10-year plan for the city of Peoria. It's a big deal, 20-year, 2020 to 2040, 20-year plan?
It's, it's good for at least 10 years, but we certainly looked out beyond that and build out conditions.
I see, okay. And so tell me, the modernization of our general plan, I mean, I'm looking at our general plan up there on the wall, and that's a, that's an old one. What, what kind of nuances did you insert in here to, to show the more modern experience that we have with our city today?
Mayor and council, that's a very good question. We looked long and hard. I, I think some of the big highlights is not only, you know, goals and policies, sounds boring, but it's how you move the community forward, it's, it's how you address different things. But we want to talk about the land plan. It was about the land use categories. It was important to look at the changes we're seeing in the community. You know, we've seen a lot of change since the advent of online retailing, right? We've seen the, less of an emphasis on all four corners being commercial. We've seen how power centers have, have struggled to build out as they were in the old days. So we've looked at different conditions throughout the city. For example, looking at trying to reposition properties into more of a mixed-use format, where they can have potentially residential or potentially office as part of that, so we don't have, we've moved from single-use areas to more mixed-use areas. And again, I can't emphasize enough, the, the land use category is that they're just more descriptive and they're, and they're just a better alignment of what our expectations for the outcome is. So I think those are big highlights.
And so if you look at a suburb, you know, 20, 30, 40 years ago, it was basically places where people spent the night.
Yep.
And then they got in their car and they drove to a center city somewhere else for work every day. And now people are wanting to stay more within their suburb and, and have not only places where they can, you know, have their residential community and their parks and their schools all together, but they can have their work and shopping as well. So everything located together. And so your general plan would reflect that change in mindset of our residents?
Mayor and council, that's correct. That's right.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Well, I am very anxious for this to go through. I, I know that it's got a lot of nuance in it that, that really reflects the environment that we're in right now, takes into consideration things like open space and, you know, preserving the things that our residents love the most about our city. So I'm looking forward to it getting on the ballot and, and people being responsive and knowledgeable. I know we've had a lot of public meetings, so I hope that people are aware of, of what it is and that as soon as it passes, we can replace that map there with a new and better one.
Absolutely, that's right.
All right, counsel, do you have a motion?
All motion.
We have a motion and seconds. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Mayor Carlet?
Yes. Item 20R passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item 21R is the adoption of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2021. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tyne for staff presentation.
Great, thank you, mayor and council. And what we have here is a series of steps. This is what we call the formal adoption steps. It's a, where we formally make a ratification to the budget that you have been reviewing over the last year. So of course, we've had numerous study sessions on various elements of the budget, as well as both operations, as well as our capital program. Of course, it's been anything but normal this year, as there, it's also been done under the lens of some economic uncertainties. So what we are looking at here is a starting point. So we had a lot of discussions about having a sense of what our operations are, the priorities, the important functions, and the trends. But this really is just a starting point as we continue to learn more about the, the budget or about the economy as we see going forward. So to go through this a little bit, we do have Barry Haug, our Assistant Finance Director, to provide you a, a presentation.
Thank you, Jeff, mayor and council. As Jeff said, tonight, we are bringing forward approval of the fiscal year 21 tentative budget. Thank you. And per state statute, we are required to do this formal adoption process that starts the first step being the tentative budget. And that, what that really means is that we're setting that maximum appropriation for the fiscal year. So we can only, we set that total budget, and then we cannot spend more than that. So that's kind of in a nutshell what it means. It was just two short weeks ago, let me get on the screen there, that we met to review the budget in detail at the May 5 study session. And for the public viewing from home, I'll highlight a couple of slides as a summary. So at the study session, we did talk about when we begin building a budget each year, we really, whether it's good times or not-so-good times, the foundation stays the same. We use the council-adopted principles of sound financial management, and these policies have been in place for many years. And because we strictly adhere to them, we are in strong position financially to prepare to address the current economic challenge. So just to review a few of those most important budget principles. When we look at our ongoing operations, we avoid using one-time or debt to fund them. We match ongoing expenditures with those ongoing revenues. We maintain healthy reserves, and that'll help us in times like now. Having reserves to bridge that short-term gap will allow us to take time to better gauge the financial picture. And if we do use them, we make sure that it's only for short-term, and we'll plan to replace them within three years. We want to make sure we're making sound strategic decisions, and we, we do this by looking at a five-year forecast on all of our operational funds and a 10-year for our CIP program. And this has really served us well in the past. So we also talked about how this was a baseline budget. And after the pandemic, or, we went back to the drawing board and put together a budget that was very similar to the current year. And as Jeff mentioned, this is an original budget that we'll need to make some adjustments throughout the next year. And we'll make sure we have those regular discussions with council to bring back any of those adjustments, so, you know, so we can get a better, once we have a better view of the financial picture. The proposed budget does not include any tax increases. The property tax remains at $1.44, and the sales tax remains at 1.8%. And per council, we are delaying the approved utility rate adjustments that, we're going to start July 1, but we changed, changed that to January 1 start date. It also supports the goals and priorities that council discussed this past January. And after the May 5 discussion, we've also added the utility wraps in the FY21 budget. So the budget we're proposing totals $665 million. So that's the total appropriation again for FY21. That's $5 million less than last year's budget, and that's about a 0.75 decrease overall. When we break that down, the capital program is about $233 million. That's a 9% decrease from the 2020 plan. And then we have our debt service at $42 million and our contingency appropriation at $75 million. And as a reminder, the contingency appropriation is really extra budget authority for those unforeseen events because of this maximum authority that we have to stay within. The largest portion is the operating budget at $313 million, and this is basically the same amount as last year, and that's what we're calling our baseline budget. So tonight, we're asking council to adopt the fiscal year 2021 tentative budget, which sets the maximum budget appropriation. Then on June 2, we'll be asking council to approve the final budget, followed by the property tax adoption on June 16. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Counsel, questions? I would just like to reiterate that in addition to the May 5 study session, we also had a series of study sessions on very particular topics that, that went into the budget. Can you remind us what a few of those were, Mr. Tyne? Or, or anyone?
I'll both elaborate. Thank you, mayor and council. That's exactly right, is that this has been a very extensive process. What we've really attempted to do is, in recognition that it is important to spend so much time on something that is 2/3 of a billion dollars, we believe it is important to really focus and dive into specific aspects of our city operations. So study sessions specifically on fire and on police, on the various utilities that we provide, like our solid waste and our water and wastewater operation, the capital improvement program, which are those large one-time improvements in infrastructure and facilities that we put forward. All of those meetings really lead up into that May 5 discussion, which, as long as it is, is really a summary of all of, a culmination of all of those different study sessions. Anything else, Mr. Haug?
And, and I just want to add to that, because all of those, the culmination of all of those led us up to a point where everything had to change, basically. I mean, it was, it was a budget based on an economy prior to a pandemic, and then when that hit, we had to make adjustments. But I, I just have to say thank you to our staff, our, our finance staff, our city management staff, that we were able to make those adjustments without cutting any kind of core services, without laying off any employees, without, you know, closing any of our parks. We were still able to do all of the core services that our citizens require of us in spite of our entire economy shutting down, basically. And I want to remind everyone, I know, I know there is a lot of citizens who live in, in Peoria who have moved here from the Midwest or, or other places, where it's very common to get the, the largest portion of your revenue from property tax. Well, that is not how it's done here. It's just not. The way we get most of our revenue is from sales tax. So when somebody buys a car or buys a new shirt or anything, that, the sales tax that you pay for the city of Peoria's portion comes to us, and we use that to fund core services. That's how we get police and fire and parks and libraries and everything. So when all of those businesses closed and didn't sell anything, we also didn't get any tax revenues. But because we are very, very cautious and prudent at all times and have, you know, reserves that show that, we were able to accommodate and continue to move on and continue to supply the core services that our citizens have come to trust from us. So I just have to thank you very much for being able to adjust and get this budget on track for our new reality, just, you know, practically in a heartbeat. So thank you very much for that. And now we have a new, what we're calling a flat budget, and, and we will continue to supply the core services that our citizens need, and we will continue to do it without raising any taxes at any time. So thanks very much. Counsel, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes.
Mayor Carlet?
Yes. And item 21R passes unanimously. Item 22R is the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2021 through 2030. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you. And this is, the, the action item is to consider adoption of not only reflecting the first year of capital budget, but actually our 10-year capital improvement program, which is a balanced plan. And I'll pass this over to Mr. Haug again.
Thank you, Jeff, mayor and council. On this item, we are asking council to adopt the proposed FY21 through 30 capital plan. As with the budget, we met on May 5 to discuss the CIP, and Adina Lund, the Development and Engineering Director, provided a lot of detail on the projects that are included in this plan. So tonight, for the viewing public, I'll just provide a few slides in summary. The CIP, as Jeff mentioned, is a 10-year balanced plan that addresses projects that are needed or will be needed across a broad spectrum of areas. It's a dynamic plan in which each year, a great deal of effort is put into updating this plan to ensure not only that the critical needs are being met, but also that the cost, scope, and timing of all projects are coordinated throughout. One key consideration is the city's ability to fund the ongoing operations and maintenance costs that are associated with each project. As such, the project, projected operating impacts are incorporated into our long-term forecasts each year. And as you can see, the coordination starts with department staff as they estimate and submit projects in the fall. Then the projects are reviewed and prioritized. We balance the project requests and available resources, and then ultimately submit a recommended program to council in May. However, as we stated at the May 5 study session, we'll be looking closely at any request to proceed with these new capital projects. Through the executive team and the budget office, we will make, ensure that we have financial capacity to go forward with these projects. So this year, the total 10-year capital program is $783 million. And as you'd expect, some of the largest categories of improvements are in our utilities, where water and wastewater combined for about 47% or $370 million. And these are major improvements in our expand, or expansions in our utility plants or our water and wastewater lines. The street and traffic improvements, that 21% or $166 million, will provide either new streets or repairs to our existing street infrastructure. The city is also making significant investments in areas such as parks, our drainage improvements, and economic development. As mentioned before, this is a balanced plan because we have identified funding sources based on reliable revenues to support both the one-time capital investments as well as the ongoing operating costs for every project within that program. And as you can see, there are multiple funding sources that support this plan. It is important to note that these revenues cannot be used for ongoing operations. These revenues are one-time funds, and many of them are restricted revenues, meaning that we can only use them for very specific things like these capital projects. This is why you might see a CIP continuing while we're still, we might be cutting the operating budgets. So tonight, we are asking council to adopt the proposed FY21 through 30 capital plan. Then on June 2, we'll be asking council to approve the first year of the capital plan as part of the overall 21 adopted budget. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Barry, would you mind going back to the slide before this?
Yep.
So you mentioned that there are some funds that we, that we can only spend in certain ways. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So, for example, kind of starting the revenue bonds, those are coming really from our enterprise funds. And again, we keep those within those funds. That'll pay the debt service for the money we borrow for those specific enterprise-related projects. So utility plants could be our... projects. So utility plants could be our, could be solid waste-type infrastructure. Our geo-bonds would be more, more, kind of like our parks. We borrow money for that. The source for that is our property tax, our secondary property tax. We can only use that to actually, for debt service on our general obligation bonds. So that's restricted as well. Outside sources, of course, we get those in. Those would be for very specific projects that were, the transportation sales tax was voted for transportation-related activities, and then capital, you know, so we use one-time funding for that to also do impact fees. Of course, those are very specific for growth-related projects. And then our operating enterprise money. So that's kind of one-time funds from operations that we put towards those enterprise projects. Again, that's restricted to really that area. The only little piece is probably the operating government at 10%. That's open to anything in the city, but it's, again, one-time money, so we can't really use it for ongoing operations. So pretty much the whole pie is used up for CIP.
So municipal budgeting is, is a little different than the budgeting that I do at home. Everything is very restrictive in how we get it and how we can use it. And the CIP really has to, to consider the, the built-out portion of our city and the new-growth portion of our city at the same time, planning ahead for 10 years. And, and in all cases, this has revenue sources for every project.
Yes.
For 10 years. Quite an accomplishment. Counsel, questions? Discussion on our CIP? All right. Do I have a motion then on item 22R?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Patenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Mayor Carlet?
Yes. And item 22R passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, we will change our identities and move on to Vistancia Community Facilities District Board meeting. The consent agenda consists of one item, and that is 23C, the January 21st, 2020 Vistancia Community Facilities District Meeting minutes. Board members, are there anything to be removed from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk, would you please poll the board?
Boardmember Patenna?
Yes.
Boardmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Finn?
Yes.
Boardmember Edwards?
Yes.
Boardmember Hunt?
Yes.
Boardmember Dunn?
Yes.
Chairperson Carlet?
Yes. Item 23C passes unanimously, and we will continue on as the Vistancia Community Facilities District Board and go to item 24R, which is the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget and tax levy for Vistancia Community Facilities District. Mr. Tyne?
Great. Thank you, Chair and Board members. And again, we'll pass this over to Sonya Andrews, our Chief Financial Officer and serving as the Finance Director for the Board.
Thank you.
Good evening, District Chair and District Board members. Item 24R is the proposed fiscal year '21 budget and tax levy for Vistancia Community Facilities District, or CFD as we call it. The Vistancia CFD is located north of Peoria. It was formed in 2002 to finance and fund major sewer and water infrastructure. Debt was issued to finance the, the water and sewer infrastructure, and that's why we, we levy a property tax to repay the debt. State statute requires the district board to approve a budget and tax levy for the district every year. So for fiscal year '21, the proposed tax levy is the same as previous years. It's $2.10 per $100 of tax assessed value. The proposed budget is $7.1 million. The proposed tax levy and budget will be presented for a public hearing on June 2nd, and the district board will be asked to adopt the final budget and tax levy at that time. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Board, any questions? Okay, so there is no increase in the tax levy. All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you please poll the board?
Boardmember Patenna?
Yes.
Boardmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Finn?
Yes.
Boardmember Edwards?
Yes.
Boardmember Hunt?
Yes.
Boardmember Dunn?
Yes.
And Chair, Chair Carlet?
Yes. Item 24R passes unanimously. And we are going to change again. We are now the Vistancia West Community Facilities District Board. And this has one item on the consent agenda, and that is 25C, the January 21st, 2020 Vistancia West Community Facilities District Meeting minutes. Board members, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Would you please poll the board?
Boardmember Patenna?
Yes.
Boardmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Finn?
Yes.
Boardsmember Edwards?
Yes.
Boardmember Hunt?
Yes.
Boardmember Dunn?
Yes.
And Chair Carlet?
Yes. Item 25C passes unanimously. And now, item 26C, Vistancia West Community Facilities District Board meeting, excuse me, 26R, is proposed fiscal year 2021 budget and tax levy for Vistancia West Community Facilities District. Mr. Tyne?
So, similar to the Vistancia Community Facilities District, this is the fiscal year '21 proposed tax levy for Vistancia West CFD. And Vistancia West is located next to the Vistancia CFD. It was created in 2015 to fund major sewer and water infrastructure as well. Similar to the Vistancia CFD, we also issued debt to finance this infrastructure, and so the proposed tax levy also does not change. It remains at $2.10 per $100 of tax assessed value. The proposed fiscal year '20 budget is $910,500. And again, like the Vistancia CFD, it's going to be presented for public hearing on June 2nd, and the final budget and tax levy will be presented for adoption then as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Once again, I just want to reiterate that the $2.10 tax rate has not increased. Is there a motion on item 26R?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Would you please poll the board?
Boardmember Patenna?
Yes.
Boardmember Binsbacher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Finn?
Yes.
Boardmember Edwards?
Yes.
Boardmember Hunt?
Yes.
Boardmember Dunn?
Yes.
And Chair Carlet?
Yes. Item 26R passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Last item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items. I have not received any requests to speak, so we will move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I wanted to offer you an update on the latest information regarding your city staff and its efforts with regard to our recovery plan here at the city and our continued outreach efforts as well to individuals. So what, we thought in the interest of time, I'll provide a more abbreviated presentation, but really, this has been compiled and presented by our deputy city managers and directors, and we thank you very much for that. But I'll summarize not near as well as they normally do, but you'll get to see them again very, very shortly. One of the things that we talk quite a bit about, and as the mayor has brought up, is as community leaders, it is so important that we do everything we can within our power to get our city up and running again. And we do that by, of course, first and foremost, preserving the core essential services that we provide as a city. But it also means to ensure our business community is sustained and that we also do all we can to protect those that are vulnerable and also disadvantaged at points in time like that. And so my summary really goes with that in mind. The backdrop, of course, the city has developed what we call a three-phase plan to the gradual reopening of all of our facilities and programs. And that includes following through with federal and state guidelines and taking the cue of our governor, Governor Ducey, which means, of course, we are in the phase one of our reopening plan that really started on May 16th and has been transitioning our staff back to our regular work locations and schedules. To give you an update by different functions, first, of course, the city hall, as well as our Development and Community Services Building, our Public Safety Administration Building, and the departments within those buildings are open and serving the public once again with our normal operating hours and operating days. Now, of course, what is important for those that do not have direct public interaction, we are continuing as a staff to exercise alternate work conditions. We are still utilizing telework and other types of activities to really ensure that we can minimize any disruption and any concerns that we have within the public health environment. So we still have that in place here, but we are available to the public for a number of different services, as we'll talk about. Our parks and trails are now open daily, and court play is open for groups that are 10 or under in all of our different areas. Something that is very important, very popular with our residents are things like our dog parks. Our dog parks have been reopened. Rio Vista Recreation Center is open with limited hours and programs. Likewise, our libraries are open with limited hours and programs, such as the lobby services. Our curbside pickup program at the library for reserved books is still in play. One thing to keep in mind is that field and Ramada rentals and the splash pads are going to remain closed until we reach what we term as the next phase, that level of comfort that we have of more individuals that would be able to congregate. We are working very closely with Peoria Unified School District to devise a plan for looking at our aquatics programs, trying to reopen the pools and aquatics programs for probably an abbreviated summer session. And so we really have appreciated all of the, the great cooperation as they manage so many challenges within that, that school district as well. Wanted to make acknowledgement to our Public Works and our Water Services Department, who have done just an outstanding job. And I was so glad to see in our Public Works Week, kind of a showcasing of all of the essential functions and every image that you saw tonight. And they continue to do great work. In fact, we'll have a little acknowledgement, a grab-and-go style breakfast for them to show their appreciation of their hard work Thursday morning from 5:00 to 6:30 at our MOC. Feel free to stop by if you would like to show your support. We also saw Chris Talid and his staff are in attendance as well to talk about just some of the various programs that they are providing assistance. And of course, we talked about within the creative economy, what can we do to be creative ourselves to help support those critical businesses and not-for-profit and important institutions that we have here. Great work that they've done in that, in that regard. The department is also working very closely with the school district as well to help support our summer childcare programs and finding ways to serve residents as well in all of the different social services. You may be aware that the community center is still open as of this week, but limited program, senior programs, adult adaptive programs will continue in more of a virtual setting as opposed to directly. So we'll have home-delivered meals until we feel comfortable that we can safely provide those services to that vulnerable population in person. Again, our Community Assistance Resource Center is open with limited client access for those that are non-at-risk service providers. So we're very judicious on how we are providing that service, again, in this first phase that we're at. If I can, talk a little bit about our first responders. Our police and fire throughout all of this have done just an amazing job. And not, clearly, not only have they been able to maintain the services they have, they've done something above and beyond that. Their presence in this community is so proactive, and it has been so refreshing. I can't thank our, our first responders enough for all of the efforts that they've done. Some interesting information, overall calls has declined in our police area about, or, excuse me, in our fire medical area. Our overall calls has dropped over the last couple of months. In fact, of course, we have new types of calls, the COVID call volume. We did have approximately 250 COVID-related calls within the City of Peoria within that two-month period of time. However, overall activity remains down. We did have, as you're aware, we, our low-acuity vehicles is what we term them. These are an alternate response vehicle that has two-person crews that responded to those 250 different incidents of the COVID-related activities. At this point in time, they are not as operational because we have a very limited need for them at this point, but we will continue to be on-call as needed should we see any increase in COVID-related calls in this community. In police, likewise, our call activity is down with overall decrease over the last couple of months. That's refreshing, but it also has allowed our police officers to reach out to the community in whole new ways, and it's really shown. And, and we're getting just wonderful comments from our residents as a result of that. The good news in both our police and fire is the impact personally of the, the health crisis to our officers, to our firefighters, has been very minimal. Right now, we have no officers, no firefighters that are self-quarantining right now. So we are very fortunate in that regard. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate their, their thoughtfulness as they address every single call by establishing very thoughtful health protocols, and it's worked very, very well. In addition to that, probably important to talk about our economic development efforts, and specifically, an internal group that we have, our Business Assistance Team, that as we've talked about in the past, helped led by our deputy city manager, Katie Gregory, but also by our amazing support group and our Chamber of Commerce, our Peoria Forum through ASU, as well as the Small Business Development Council, still continuing to do great work. As you will see shortly, we are very closely to be able to launch our new micro-loan program. Very shortly, we anticipate coming to you with a micro-loan program combined with a business assistance grant program. We look to solidify funding, which we've talked about with you, on how we would be able to support businesses in a whole new inventive way. And so more to come as we go through that. Likewise, I wanted to acknowledge our new ad hoc small business advisory committee. The mayor had called for a new committee comprised of business leaders here in the City of Peoria, and they are providing important guidance about what it is that we need short, medium, and long-term to help assist the businesses in our community. And already, that conversations have already occurred. They've had their first meeting, and I heard it was just a very helpful conversation that could have gone any number of different ways. So great to have that, that kind of conversations, and kudos to all that were involved in that. On our own financial front, and we just, of course, heard our budget update, but that doesn't preclude us from trying to seek additional funding at this point in time. In fact, just on Friday, we applied for a federal FEMA grant that would seek reimbursement for COVID-related expenses, such as our personal protective equipment and disaffected supplies. And we have, in addition, about 10 other grants that we are also seeking at this point in time. Of course, under the federal coronavirus relief funds, the CARES Act, Arizona was allotted funding as well for various important, under the state stabilization funds. And we really appreciate our, our mayor serving to assist in how cities might be able to apply that money and working closely with Governor Ducey on that. And we really appreciate her efforts in that specific area. Peoria also is tentatively due to receive some additional community development block grant money, that is federal money that can be used, and that also can be used for very specific purposes. But we are looking at recommending to distribute that to small business assistance as well, utility assistance, and anything else that can help ensure that folks don't fall through the social safety net. And so we are excited to bring that back to you in upcoming June meeting to give you an, a proposal for how we would apply those additional funds. So a lot of different activity that's going on. While we are returning back to business, we recognize it is not business as usual at this point in time. And so we continue to recognize this as a fluid situation and that we will continue to adapt to the needs of our residents and businesses. So that's really all we have for the city manager report. I'll address any questions you have.
Counsel, questions? Discussion? I appreciate how flexible your plan has been up to this point. I mean, it's, it's pretty incredible how many things have had to happen and change and happen and change and pivot and move just in the last few months. I mean, it's only been since March that we've been doing this, and it's incredible how many plans we've had to put together and how many adjustments we've had to make. But you've been on top of every bit of it, every step of the way, always taking into consideration the, the health and well-being of our residents while we continued with all of our services that we needed, we needed to supply to them. So, and, and putting together a budget at the same time. So, no problem. Well, thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done. We appreciate it. And with that, we're adjourned.